I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, March 23rd, special meeting of the Favre School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Laravee.
Here.
Ms. Pereira.
Here.
Ms. Roderick.
Here.
Mayor Coogan.
Here. Salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizens' input? We do.
We do.
One, Colin Dias, Ray Street, Fall River. Deb, could you please read it?
Good afternoon, members of the Favre School Committee. The residents and taxpayers of this great community achieved a victory at the last school committee meeting. I am happy the school department published the draft budget. And as the mayor said, this is a bygone practice. I am writing to clear the record about comments made at the last meeting. Speaking for myself, I want to thank Superintendent Ponce for allowing the budget to be published. I did not think she or anyone in particular were trying to hide anything, and I have great respect and admiration for the superintendent. Members of the community made their voices clear and made their voices heard. We just wanted to see full transparency and be able to see the draft budget when members of the school committee would also see the same draft. I don't want to turn this into a tit-for-tat because that was never my intention. However, I wanted to briefly respond to Ms. Pereira, a person who I have a lot of respect for, for comments made at the last meeting, because I believe it's important for the community to have a full understanding of what the intentions were. They were positive intentions for the betterment of the community. Ms. Pereira, I did not hear one person who wrote a letter state that you or any other committee member say, quote-unquote, "I don't want to see the budget released." I did not hear one person accuse you or any other committee member of not being transparent, wanting to be untransparent. I heard members of the public speak out against a long-term practice that should have been replaced in the name of government transparency. And I don't particularly appreciate you putting words in our mouths and imagining a conflict, an us-versus-them attitude that just simply never existed. I am proud that others joined me in sticking up for the transparent government. I absolutely didn't say anything untruthful. I don't know what possibly made you come up with that. That right there is just not true. My comments regarding asking other committee members to please step it up was not made to be personal or insinuate that the other school committee members are not transparent. I only heard Ms. Roderick's and Mr. Agia comment publicly on the issue. If you did as well, or if you tried to help behind the scenes and I just missed it, then I apologize. We should work together. Actually, we should all work together to create a fully transparent school department that the community can have a restored faith and trust in. Let's work together on issues that matter most to the students of this community and not have unnecessary bickering. To quote a famous movie star, "Why speak of conflict when cooperation can make us all rich?" Lastly, I want to end by thanking Mr. Agia and Ms. Roderick's for being, like myself, champions of transparency. Thank you, Colin Dias.
Thank you. 3.1 on the committee of the whole is a discussion of fiscal year 2023 budget. I'll allow, of course, our superintendent, Ms. Ponce, to talk first.
Sure. Just an update on the process. Tonight, we're going to officially hand over our Favre Public Schools draft budget to all of you. And with your vote to approve, the budget is officially transferred to the Favre Public Schools School Committee. You're going to vote to officially approve it and release it to the public. Then the draft budget is going to be posted and available for members of the community to review. I know that we posted it last week, but we will officially have the interim period between today and April 11th, when we have the budget public hearing. Also, on our end, I want you to know that we concluded the budget presentations last week, where principals and department heads came before you to advocate for their needs. I know it was a comprehensive process. It was a long process, but it was a worthwhile process because you get to hear from principals and department heads, and we also get to hear from all of you. Since our last meeting last week, we've been reviewing feedback, making adjustments as needed. Specifically, we heard throughout the meetings, we needed a common understanding of the community facilitator position. We met with all principals and senior staff. I asked them what their vision was for that position. We jotted it down. We looked at what our current description was. We looked at neighboring communities' job description for the facilitator, and we're in the process of revising that language so that it is consistent amongst all schools. So, thanks for that feedback. We also reviewed the student support specialist, behavior specialist, behavior therapist advocacy, right? Those roles and responsibilities. There was a lot of what we... There's a lot of overlap in those three positions. As principals and as a leadership team, we discussed how each of those roles are currently functioning within our schools. We talked about the roles and responsibilities of those individuals, and I asked principals, again, to talk about what that additional layer of support, social-emotional support, should look like and sound like in their schools. And, again, we took that information. And as a result, we're in the process of crafting a new description and determining where that position lives, whether it's going to be an ESNON, whether it's going to be FREA or FRA. But, again, we needed to all be on the same page. We all know we need additional support. We just all need to be clear in what that additional support should look like and sound like for students as well as for adults. And we reviewed the current parrot supports that we have in place in all of our substantially separate classrooms. As we heard, there's a disparity between our programs and the language-based classrooms. Initially, we were proposing flow-to-parrot professionals to help support the language-based classrooms. After reviewing all of our needs, we're making an adjustment to reflect that all language-based classrooms are staffed with two parrot professionals, just like all the other sub-separate programs. So, we continue to take that feedback. You got... I know Ms. Cabral shared with you a budget update sheet that Mr. Almeida put together. Those additional pairs, we're adding 10 additional pairs to those self-contained classrooms. Two will be assigned to Morton, three to Talbot, two to Sylvia, two to Green, and one to Cuss, so that all the language-based classrooms are staffed appropriately. Okay? And we're going to offset that with... Obviously, we also voted here with the ELT. We're going to... The money that had been set aside for that. Okay? And that's the update so far. Thanks.
Excellent. Any further discussion on the budget? Mr. Agia.
Just trying to digest this document we've just received. So, when you add the 10, were they not in the budget? Is that what you... It sounds like that's what you're saying.
Absolutely.
But there's additional ones in the budget.
Yes.
For the same classrooms?
Well, in the classrooms in the budget, we had parrot professionals for first grade and as needed. But as a result of our discussions, we went back and looked at it, and instead of having those flow-to-pairs, so we're going to assign pairs to all the language-based classrooms. So, they... In some schools, there were two; in some schools, there were only one. So, the schools that only had one, we're going to fill and make sure that there's parity between all the sub-separate classrooms.
But the conversation we were having, I think there was floaters already in there, in the budget.
Right. And then this is the difference, Mr. Emerald. Almeida can certainly speak to that. But we already had a couple of them in the budget as floaters, and we're filling additional ones.
So, what we're doing is just adding to what we currently have in the budget. So, when we built some of those positions in the budget, we were making it such that those classrooms had essentially a pair and a half. They were splitting a pair between classrooms. With these addition of these 10 parrot professionals in those self-contained classrooms, each classroom, each self-contained classroom will have a minimum of one teacher, two pairs, in each classroom.
So, like, for instance, we see Talbot, three additional self-contained pairs. So, how many classes were... If they were one and a half, like, how many... It just seems to me, my first look at this, that it's double counting, but maybe...
So, Talbot had initially six classrooms in total, and they had nine parrot professionals to go along with the six classrooms. So, now, we're adding... Through this process, we're adding three additional pairs. They'll now have 12 pairs. So, six classrooms, 12 pairs now. So, it's one and two.
And that's in all schools across the district?
This is for all schools, for middle and elementary.
So, I would assume that that's basically... Other than high school, it's all schools, K-8s and...
Yes.
Yes.
If anybody has a language-based classroom, they're going to have the same?
Yep.
Any sub-separate classroom will have two pairs in each classroom.
Every sub-separate room across the entire district?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think it... I like the idea of it. It makes sense. We went over the argument for it, so I'm not opposed to it. It just... This wasn't as clear in what we're reading. Your words were clearer than in writing, I guess, but... At the end of the day, I agree. Thank you very much. I yield.
Anything further? Next item on the agenda is a vote to approve the Favre Public Schools fiscal year 2023 draft operational budget in the amount of $141,857,792 for the purpose of public release in preparation for the public hearing scheduled on April 11th, 2022. Mr. Assad.
Yes, I'd like to address the committee on some procedural issues and some legal issues. At this time, it could be my advice that the school committee consider and vote on six individual line items prior to considering and voting on the draft operational budget as a whole. As you know, certain members of the school committee may have family members who are employed by the school district and, as such, have individual line items in the proposed preliminary budget. As this is a common occurrence throughout the state for committees and boards, the law provides a procedure for handling such situations. Under the law, to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest, if a family member of a public official has a financial interest in a particular matter, that comes before the committee. That public official must abstain from participating or voting on that individual matter and any financial matter concerning the direct supervisor of that family member. Once those matters have been decided, however, the public official may vote on all of the other line items in the budget and can vote on the budget as a whole. The procedure to be followed requires the committee, school committee, to identify those line items concerning committee members' relatives and those relatives' immediate supervisors. The affected committee member then must abstain from consideration and voting on those issues, on those items. Once the individual items are addressed, all members of the committee may vote on the budget as a whole package. Here, in this particular instance, Chairman Paul Coogan's brother, Thomas Coogan, and his nephew, Graham Coogan, are employed by the school department. Additionally, school committee woman, Mimi Laravee's brother, Matt Damaris, is also employed by the school department. Therefore, in accordance with the law and the state ethics guidelines, it is requested that the following individual line items be considered separately by the other members of the committee prior to voting on the remainder of the draft budget. Chairman Coogan requests that the following line items be addressed by the school committee prior to a discussion and vote with respect to the proposed preliminary budget. First, it would be Tom Coogan. He's charged to human res... And your line items, human resources, professional salaries, Maria Ponce, Mr. Coogan's supervisor, charged to superintendent professional salaries, Graham Coogan, charged to laterno administrator professional salaries, 22659000-511200. And Sean Simpson, Graham Coogan's supervisor, charged to laterno administrator professional salaries, In the same fashion, school committee woman, Mimi Laravee, requests that the following individual line items be considered separately by the other members of the committee. Matt Damaris, charged to Durfy Administration professional salaries, 20158000-511200. An assistant superintendent charged to superintendent professional salaries, 28484000-511200, which would be Matt Damaris's immediate supervisor. After the consideration of these individual items, it will be in order for the school committee to consider and vote on the other individual items as well as the entire budget as a whole. And with that, I'd ask that the first addressed Chairman Coogan's matter, and I'd ask Chairman Coogan to please step off the desk. And, Mr. Hart, you'd be, as vice chair, would be conducting the meeting. And I'd ask that you start with a discussion and move for a motion and a vote as to whether the individuals that we just mentioned would be incorporated as stated or modified in the preliminary budget.
So, are we asking for a motion on these?
Yes.
Is there a motion on the table?
It would be for each individual one. First, for Tom Coogan.
Okay. Is there a motion for, number one, for Tom Coogan to...
To be incorporate... To be incorporated into the preliminary budget as stated in the document that you have or modified. It's subject to discussion and vote.
Okay. Is there a motion on the table?
Question.
Mr. Agia.
So, I'm having a hard time with this because I've been on this board now for four years. We've never once taken a vote like this. Earlier in the budget process, I asked to make a motion that we have more than one line item. We didn't get a second. So, now, we're going to go down and we're going to vote, even though the school committee has nothing to do with each individual person. But we're going to go down to see who's got a family member, cousin, whoever, and we're going to cherry pick those line items, and that's okay for us to vote on. I just don't... I don't get it. I came here today thinking, the committee has been heard. We're voting on one line item at the bottom of the budget. So, I don't get the idea of why, all of a sudden now, it's 5:00, haven't heard a damn thing from anybody on this board or in the administration about what was going to be presented, and we're going to read off a whole paragraph of conflicts and say, "Well, we're going to vote on this. We're going to vote on that." I just don't find it to be... I don't even know what to say because of how this even is before us. We were told we're not voting on the line items. Now, we're going to vote on specific line items because people have conflicts. And we're going to get no information ahead of time, and we haven't voted like this for years. We've always voted on the entire budget. We've been told in the past by administration after administration that when you vote for the major total budget, you're not specifying each individual person, so it's okay to vote. Now, all of a sudden, which with no other info... I don't know. Did anybody get ethics? I haven't seen any ethics letters, any ethics hearings, any nothing. I haven't seen not one thing. 5:00 comes, now, we're going to get... Let's just throw this stuff out there, and we're going to vote on line items. I have no idea whether we need to do this or not. It makes zero sense to me to go through and cherry pick certain line items for certain people that have a conflict. If we vote on the whole budget, we vote on the whole budget. We're not doing line items only when it's convenient for people to have conflicts. And I, quite frankly, find that insulting, and I'm not voting for any of them. I yield.
I want to address that.
Mr. Assad.
First of all, that is the law and the regulations for the Ethics Commission. All it is is a situation to make sure that the individual who has a family member that is a member of the Favre School Department does not vote or discuss or deliberate with respect to that particular individual. That's all it is. Nothing more and nothing less.
Then why haven't we done it for years? This is the first time. Is anybody going to challenge whether this is the first time this is happening? This is the first time. I'm not making it up. This is the first time this is going to happen. Paul Coogan's brother's been the HR director last year, the year before that, too. Why are we doing it this year? That's my only problem. It's getting it thrown on us at 5:00 with no feedback, no information. It doesn't make logical sense.
Well, it is... It rules off of the Ethics Commission in terms of their advisories, and we're going to be following it today, and we're going to be following it into the future. All it is is that, in this particular case, it would be the mayor, and in the next case, would be Ms. Laravee, would not be participating in any vote or any discussion or any deliberation with respect to a member of their immediate family. Period.
And did we vote last year?
What's that?
Can you please address the issue of why Ms. Laravee... I'm not picking on Ms. Laravee, but she's here. Why Mr. Coogan, Ms. Laravee, anybody that had a conflict? Why in last year's budget did we not have to take this vote?
You know something? I don't know. And it may have been oversight. It may not have been oversight. But the bottom line is, we're here today, and this is how we're going to vote.
Where did it... Where did this request come from?
I reviewed the ethics opinion with respect to individuals who were members of the elected body, who had individuals who were members of the school department itself in terms of whether there would be any issue with respect to the vote by the elected official. And the way it came down is this, is that, number one, the individual elected official would not be able to participate in the discussion or vote, but could vote on the total budget. That's not an issue. But the protocol that's being used right now by the Ethics Commission is that they like to have these separated so that there's no... There's transparency. There's no one trying to hide an issue where there's a relative that's a member of the school department. It's to bring it out to the public to show that there's no conflict of interest. There's no situation where someone is being taken, given an advantage that they should not have. That's all it is. It's not a situation... If you have no problem with the figure that's in the contract, that's fine. If you did, then you'd have the same rights you have right now to modify it or to debate it. But the bottom line is, and it's a fair... And it's a right thing. It's a fair thing, is that the individual who has a family member should be available to be able to step aside to allow the committee as a whole, who has no contact, familiar contact, with the individual, to make the vote. All it is is to try to be transparent.
And you just said that we could vote on the total budget. That's what I just heard you say, Attorney Assad.
At the end, yes.
We could, no.
But there's... No, let me finish. Let me finish. Don't... Let me finish. They have a procedure. The procedure is you go over the individual people first, and then you go to the rest of the contract. You go individually, or you go for a full vote on the full contract. Once the individuals are incorporated into the preliminary budget without any vote by a family member, then it's fair game. It's okay for that family member, who is an elected official, to be able to vote on the whole budget. Those are the rules that they go by. That's what they want us to follow, and that's what we're following today.
Is that all for the discussion, Mr. Agia?
I'll yield. I have something else to say, but I did yield before, so I want to be supportive of my colleagues if they have anything to say. I'd like to be recognized after anyone.
Is there any other discussion? I asked if there was a motion for Tom Coogan. Do you have something? Okay. I didn't see you raising a hand. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, my... Just as a new school committee member, I should be able to look at... This isn't a knock on anyone. I want to make that very clear. Sometimes, we don't recognize what we should have been doing, right? It's an oversight, and then, once we know better, we do better, right? That's the reality of things. But it goes back to my point, which I've made in the past, about what we do in practice and what we do in policy should match. And so, that's the piece that I struggle with. So, when you first were talking about this and you were bringing that up, I honestly didn't know what we were talking about. And I'm sure that I'm not the only person at this table that wasn't aware of that. So, to vote on something, I have to be aware. I'm aware now, now that there's been some discussion about it, and I get what we're doing. But, again, if something is happening in practice, it should be reflected in policy and vice versa. So, that's the only point that I want to make, that, again, right? We've kind of come up against this issue, that what we've done for so long isn't necessarily what we should have been doing. And I just want to acknowledge that. And I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Roderick's. Well, we're going to let Bobby talk first, and then we'll go back to Mr. Agia. Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
I just agree with Ms. Roderick's. You know, there's a few times we had discussions on this stage and talking about things that we've done in past practices. You know, so listening to Mr. Agia and Mrs. Roderick's, we've done certain things in past practices, and they've continued to work, and we said they have because we've had discussions plenty of times. And like Ms. Roderick's was saying, you know, some of us are new, so these are things we didn't know. so these are things we didn't know. So these are things that I would like to know moving forward, if we talk about transparency and things like that, because I wanna be able to make decisions based upon, you know, facts and things we've done in the past. And if they don't work, then change them. But these are things I would like to know ahead of time.
Okay, very well said, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Pereira, did you have anything to say? Mr. Agia?
So I can totally appreciate the new members not understanding what's going on. I can totally understand that. Because I've been sitting here paying attention, working my butt off to know the issues and to know the policies, procedures. And I don't understand what the heck this is all about, because it makes no sense to me. What we're talking about here today is something that's implying, I don't know, because I haven't seen the legal opinion. I ask the question, why are we even looking at this right now? I'm assuming that the mayor might have asked Attorney Assad to look at this. I don't know, I'm just assuming. But at the end of the day, the decisions and the description is implying that we vote on line items. That's the part of the problem that I really have here. If we were gonna go through, like I recommended to the superintendent, to the committee, to the chairman, and we vote for core centers, each particular core center, I can totally appreciate the fact that if we were voting on the core center for Durfee High School, and Ms. Larvee's brother is in that, that she would have to abstain from that core center vote. I totally understand that. The same with the HR department. If we had a vote, Mr. Coogan would have to step out or with his nephew. I understand that. But I wanna be very clear that what we're discussing here today does not make sense, in the fact that we were told at the beginning of this process that we're not approving any line items. So if anyone called the Ethics Commission and asked them, the floor of a school committee is going to vote on $141 million budget, a general budget, not the specific core center related to this individual. The answer might be totally different than what we're getting today. But I don't know, because I haven't seen it. I didn't know this was coming up. I only found out about this when I sat down here at 5:00. But the real issue here isn't for me to be a pain in the neck and to give anybody a hard time. It's just to call it like I'm seeing it right now. And what I'm seeing is we're falling all over ourselves to try to make sure that we're not voting, or having somebody vote on something that's just to look like the appearance of any kind of conflict isn't there. All I'm asking for is from the chairman on down to every member of this committee, including the attorney and the superintendent, to be consistent across the board when you're talking about things like that. Because we haven't been consistent on that. When it's convenient, we say we're gonna err on the side of caution or not. If we're gonna be taking this vote, then we better be taking all the votes every single time when somebody might potentially have a conflict. But this is clear as day to me, that this is, there's no reason for us to be taking these votes, other than the fact that we're just trying to cover for something that I don't even think we have to. It's just something that I feel strongly on. The bottom line of the budget is one item. That's what we're gonna be voting on after we do this, whatever you call this process of these five, six votes. So on the five or six votes that we're gonna vote for these particular people, we're not taking another 30 votes for all the other core centers. And then we're gonna vote legally and ethically okay for one number that encompasses the whole thing. That, to me, defies logic. And I've been here for years, and we haven't done it before. I can't, if somebody wants to say, we've been violating the ethics law, Mr. Coogan's been violating the ethics law, anybody that's done this, if that's what somebody wants to say, then feel free to say it. But I don't think that's what anybody's saying. Because if we're gonna vote on this as, this is the gospel, this is what we should be doing, then he violated the ethics law for the last four years. I just don't see it. I think it's unnecessary, and I'm disappointed that things come out like this at the last minute. People know how to reach us. We can get information before meetings if we need to. But at the end of the day, I don't even see how this is even possible, what we're voting on. We're voting on this, and then we got a whole bunch of items. I guess nobody knew about this, right? This just come out today?
That's correct. And also, let me just say one thing. Let me just say one thing. With respect to this vote, and I don't wanna conflate this with something more than what it is. If in fact, the, well, the Ethics Commission has a protocol that if in fact these individuals are taken individually up front, then the two members on this committee who have relatives in the department would be able to vote on the entire budget. If in fact, you choose not to vote on these individuals up front, then both individuals have to abstain. That's as simple as it is. So it's a question of whether or not you have an issue with two members of the school committee voting on a matter when all it is, is to make sure that they didn't have a hand in putting these individuals in the budget at the salary levels that they're at. That's all this is. So if you wanna conflate it to something else, that's very well. You could do whatever you wanna do. But the rulings and the advisories from the Ethics Commission and the law are clear. You don't have to do this. You just don't vote. You abstain. But if you want them to vote, and they want to vote, then you have to take them individually. That's what it is. It may not make sense to you, but that's what the ruling is, and it makes a lot of sense in terms of having something that's proactive and having something that's upfront and transparent.
So, Mr. Assad, so what you're saying, I think pretty much what you're saying is, if we do not wanna take these names here, then we have the other alternative is to vote on the entire budget of the $141 million, and those two abstain?
Yes, and I think you may wanna step out right now. Yeah, and the two individuals would have to abstain.
Okay. Well, I've asked for a motion on these, for the first, for Tom Coogan, but I haven't heard any motion to be made. I don't know if there's any appetite for it. Mr. Pereira, do you wanna say something?
Just a little confused. I agree with Mr. Agia in his frustration. I just got this information as I sat down as well. Was this something that, like, the protocols, have they changed from last year? Have they given new advisement, the Ethics Committee? Or is this something we just didn't think about doing last time?
The issue came up when I looked at the agenda items, and also knowing that there are a couple of members now that are on the committee who also have individuals who are family members. In addition to which, we just went through a whole situation with another superintendent where it was very much highlighted as to what the protocols would be.
Gotcha.
And that's what the protocols are being followed.
So you're saying, based on the dealings of the last superintendent and all of that kind of coming to light in the community and such, that you kinda traced back to try to find something that would be more transparent?
That's correct.
And, you know, that the community and people would understand?
And looking at their advisories, this was a clear and very simple way of handling it, in terms of having the individuals who were involved not take part in any vote of a family member. It's pretty clear to me that that's...
Now, so I'm trying to understand, because to Mr. Agia's point, if they're voting on the entire budget, they're voting on those salaries, right?
That's the whole thing. That's, it's not, sometimes the law doesn't make sense. Sometimes state agencies and their guidelines don't make any sense.
Yep.
And many times, when you go to, a guy like myself who goes to court all the time, a judge could do whatever a judge wants.
Sure.
An agency can do whatever an agency wants. And what the agency is saying is that it's not gonna be any violation if in fact you take it separately and then vote on the whole package.
So basically, they're saying our initial vote on these positions is to put those positions, we're voting to put them in the budget, without the other two members who have conflicts voting to put them in the budget.
That's correct.
And then, once they're in the budget, they can come in and vote on the entire budget. That's how it makes sense to the Ethics Commission. Okay. I mean, I'm here to do what's best for the school department and best for the kids. I know that's why we're all here. And this is frustrating to me, Kevin, as well, especially being new. I like to come here very prepared, so when I get thrown things, I'm like, wait, what is this? Why is he reading off all this stuff? So I understand your aggravation. I just, I mean, I honestly couldn't go either way on this. I just wanna expedite this so we get this done, and we do what's best for the school department. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Pereira. Is there any, Mr. Agia?
So, just to be to the point, the issue is, as I said before, we are not voting on any of the line items. So Ms. Pereira just said, well, so if we vote on these, only these eight line items, it defies logic to say we're only gonna vote on, it's actually even more ridiculous that we're gonna pinpoint those that have a conflict. Do I think that Mayor Coogan is making decisions because of his brother? It's not, no. Do I think Ms. Larvee's doing it because of her brother? No. We're actually making matters worse right now. Because what we're doing is highlighting the fact that we're gonna bend over backwards because we got some people that have conflicts. And I don't think anybody's doing anything really crazy, to be quite honest with you. So the real issue should have been, we come to the meeting here, if this is what real leadership would do, is you say, we got a choice here at the budget. We have two options, members of the school committee. We can either vote for the budget as a whole, because you've already decided it's $141 million and we're only voting on one line item. So here's the two options, folks. We can either go through this, whatever you wanna call it, to fall all over ourselves for eight positions or six positions. That's option one. And option two is that they abstain, like they are right now, out of the room. We make a motion to approve the $141 million. The roll call goes, and each person gets a chance to vote, and there's no conflict. So I was gonna vote no on this budget, because I am opposed to the way, but I've beat that horse dead, that you all know my feeling, the public knows my feeling, superintendent knows my feeling. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the budget of $141, 857, 792. That's what I'm voting, that's what I'm making a motion for right now. I ask you for a second, let's take the vote, and we can move on, and that's it.
There's a motion on the table by Mr. Agia to accept the draft, the operational budget in the amount of $141, 857, 792. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded? Roll call?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
So the vote is a positive vote? Do we need to bring in?
Now they can come back, yes.
Okay, well, can someone go grab, thank you.
Can I make a final comment about that?
Go ahead, Ms. Roderick.
So when my issue became, I don't feel comfortable not being consistent in the way that I'm looking at things. So we've been told repeatedly that we're not gonna vote on line items. So I don't feel comfortable, kind of, you know, 20 minutes into a meeting, I have no background information, being told, okay, we don't vote on line items, but you're gonna vote on these. So I'm uncomfortable with that, because that goes against, like, what my values are, and so that's how I'm gonna vote. And so I just feel like I need to explain that it's not a matter of that I disagree, because I think actually that practice makes sense. But in order to rectify that practice, we've gotta rectify the other one, too. And with that, I yield.
Duly noted. Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay. Yep. Obviously, I'm extremely pleased that the budget passed, and now we can get on to the next thing. Transportation, which, 3.3, is a vote to approve the Fall River Public Schools 2022 draft transportation budget in the amount of $11 million for the purpose of public release in preparation for the public hearing scheduled on Monday, April 11th.
Motion approved with a question.
Two, I also have a comment.
You need a second?
I didn't. You need a second?
Second.
All right. Kev, you talked first, so go ahead.
No, just, the only question I would have is, what are we currently projecting to spend in the current year, though, relative to transportation?
Somewhere between, somewhere between $10.8 and $11 million.
And the, when you recommend an 11, it's with, you've looked at the, like, the escalators, the, this is what you're projecting for real, it's not just a coin or number?
Yes.
And we think we can...
I, what I, the only caveat I'll state is the gas, and what the gas means to potential additional prices in the future. So it's the only caveat I have.
So there's escalators in the contracts?
Yes. For, fuel is typically an escalator, but I don't know what that, you know, what that would amount to, to be honest with you.
Any idea?
No.
Is it possible to get that?
I, something that I'd have to look at and project out.
And when we say draft, so let's just suppose that you went and looked at that number, $3.75, whatever it is, there's a formula, and it come out with 11.5, or $500,000 increase. When this says draft, how do we, how do we rectify that after this is a draft? Is it still, we get time to add it when you come to us next month?
No, I think, I think at this point, we keep it at $11 million, because we don't know what the future holds, and we address it in the future. If it goes up, it goes up. Something we address.
And the city pays that?
Yeah.
So I, for one, would like to get that sooner than later on the escalator, just so that, and I'm not looking for the penny, because you got bigger...
It's something I can, something I'll work on with Ms. Cabral and transportation.
Let's say it's between $300,000 and $900,000, something like that. We at least know that this is, like, I personally don't think you can transport the kids, all the kids' needs on transportation for $11 million. I'll say that right now. Because I think what we do is, sometimes we fit the amount of transportation and stuff into a number, rather than what the needs of the children are. That's just my own personal editorial. So I ask you, you think it's 11, I'm sure you talked to Mr. Pacheco, Mrs. Ponce about it, so I'm not debating that. I'm just giving you my opinion. I think that number's too low, based on 10.8 this year. But if you come back to us, I just don't wanna get caught up into, six months from now, we say, oh, it's $600,000 increase, who's gonna pay that bill? With that, I yield. Thank you.
Kevin, with this discussion going on about transportation, I've looked at the law related to transportation, and as Mr. Agia pointed out, we don't transport all the kids. We're obligated K to six. I'm gonna ask, if I could get a motion a second, that to offset the increased assessments in Chapter 70, the, what I believe Mr. Agia is correct, what's gonna be a jump that's gonna end up coming back to the city and transportation down the road, if we could get the money that the city is not obligated to spend on transportation, but is very important to get our kids to school out of ESER either 1, 2, or 3. We got, we have almost $63 million there. We've spent 15% of it, as far as I know, the last accounting I got from the state. And I am working now on some draft legislation that we're gonna try to get to the State House to try to help with transportation. I know many people have tackled it, but there are things we need to help the city of Fall River to give our residents some tax relief, and hopefully make sure we have a balanced budget. So the part that's not mandated, I would entertain a motion if I could get $2.2 million a year out of ESER for this year and next year to offset transportation costs for the Fall River Public School students.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion a second on that. Mr. Agia?
Consistency, policy, protocol, the right thing to do. There's a time and a place for everything. Before us is a vote to approve a draft transportation in the amount of $11 million. We've already approved all of our ESER funds, we've already approved all that stuff. So in, when it's convenient, we criticize and say, oh, we shouldn't make motions from the floor, when it's convenient. Now, we're gonna make a motion for the floor, for us to give up $2 million in one vote with zero information, zero. Unless somebody talked to somebody behind the scenes here, outside of this open meeting, I've gotten no info other than we could always look at it in the future. This before us here is a vote for $11 million draft transportation. There's food for thought when the budget gets done, when the city budget gets done, when we have a joint meeting, all that stuff to dialogue about this, all well and good. But to do it off the floor when it's just convenient now, I'm not voting for it. That doesn't mean I'm not open to a discussion. But there is a time and a place to have that discussion, and pulling it out like this isn't the right time to do it, in my opinion. We already approved all the ESER funds. I asked, every meeting, I asked Mr. Almeida, I asked Superintendent Ponce, do we have budgets? We're spending money that we've already identified to the state that we're gonna spend that. So whether we spent it already, 10% or 15%, we've identified it. Been saying this for months now. So to pull it out, we're gonna do it at a meeting, after this is the agenda item? If that's the case, the agenda item should read, "Vote to Approve School Department Spending $2.2 Million in ESER Funds for Transportation," like we have done in the past. If we wanna truly do the right thing, do it in the right way. That's what this should say. This shouldn't say it now. This is a work in progress, this is a draft. I wanna bring that back to future meetings. I'm more than happy to look at it and research it before the meetings, when we get the information prior to a meeting. I don't see that as something that just came up in the last 48 hours. This has been an issue for months. So I'm not voting for it for that reason. It's not the right time, it's not the right thing to do, and we have zero information. People wanna vote for it, four members vote, so be it. I haven't had the info. I don't feel like giving up $2 million without knowing what the background is on it. The mayor makes valid points on, the city has some budget trouble, let's see it. Let's have the joint meeting, let's talk about it. If we can help at that point, working with our administration, I'd probably be in favor of it at that time. But right now isn't the right time, and it's not the right way to do it. We can't just do this stuff when it's convenient, criticize on one thing, and then just do the, do it on your own. So I'm not voting for it. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. It's my position that this is the right time, so that people know that we are gonna make a commitment to transport as many kids as possible to the Fall River Public Schools. I think at the same time, the taxpayers in Fall River could use a little relief. I think we can send a message tonight that we're funding our schools at 100%. We're taking care of our transportation, and we're also thinking of the taxpayers in the city of Fall River. There's nothing wrong with doing all three tonight, and I did have a brief conversation with you. I will grant you, it was months ago, about some things I was thinking about, and it was off the cuff. But at the same time, I wanted people to know that we can do three positive things for the city tonight, and moving forward, especially during these extraordinary times, when not only do we have $63 million in ESER money, but we also have a $24 million increase in straight Chapter 70 funding for the Student Opportunity Act, which is gonna be a transfer of a $2 million bill to the city of Fall River, a little better than that, which of course is our obligation, which of course will meet as, at the last meeting, Mr. Agia was obviously correct to bring up, when was the money gonna come over from the city? And we're doing that now in conjunction with Mr. Ike Capone and Kevin Almeida. So I do have a motion and a second. I do appreciate the diligence of the committee to know that we're representing a city as well as the schools, and if we are able to help our residents and transport our kids, it's the best of all worlds. Mr. Agia?
I'd like to, I wanna yield to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I wanna yield to anyone on the board that wants to talk. I'm not looking to monopolize time. Please, if somebody else wants to talk, I'm all ears.
Ms. Larvee, please.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Ms. Larvee.
It's okay.
I don't look that way enough.
So I'm just trying to understand, I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Agia, where I think it's a fantastic idea if we can help our city, help our constituents with some tax breaks. We do know that Durfee was ginormous, and it did kinda hit some of our residents, and now they're talking about a new school for Diamond, and that's also gonna hit our residents. But what I just might ask to you, Mr. Chairperson, is what's the urgency right now to vote on this tonight? Is there an emergency?
Well, it wasn't, oh, can I talk?
No, she wasn't asking for me, no. I'm not the chairman.
No, but I told you you were next.
Is it, is it an emergency to talk tonight?
No, it's, it's...
Are you under any pressure to get this through? Can you give me a little information on that?
My emergency was to put it onto the table. I believe that it's the right thing to do. I hope going forward, I mean, I have the votes tonight, but if I don't, we'll bring it back at another time. But I do believe that it benefits the city, the schools, and the taxpayers in Fall River. I think that that's what we should be looking to do on almost all of our votes. I don't think, in this extraordinary time, when we have that kinda money around, we can't give our taxpayers a break, at the same time take care of transportation and make sure the Fall River Public Schools is strong. It is an extraordinary time for funding. It's nothing like I've ever seen, as long as I've been on this committee, or when I was on the Diamond Committee for six years. I've never seen numbers like this. And I think it's time that if we can do something to help, I think it's possible. Ms. Roderick?
I think this is a situation of it's both and, right? It's both necessary to do something positive, it's necessary to give people a break. I'm one of those families, although my kid, I don't think is ever gonna get transportation. I live a block away from the school, so I don't think that's gonna happen. But this is also an issue of, we make a commitment to making decisions based on information and being able to gather all that information and have a really good understanding. and being able to gather all that information and have a really good understanding before we can make a decision. So I get stuck with that piece of, yeah, this might be a good thing, but there, there isn't a sense of urgency, because this is something that we've been talking about for a long time, and this wouldn't go into place until next year anyway. And so I think it would be fair to be able to provide, you know, concrete information so we can look at, I am going to guess that every single person at this table is going to look at that and say, yeah, of course we're going to do it, but we don't have the opportunity to really have a discussion about it. And so that's where I get stuck, right? So if, if we're, we're talking about making decisions, I never feel comfortable making a decision off the, and with that, I yield.
Okay, well, again, I, I'm willing, I, I think, I think most of the points here are valid, I'll expect that we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting, I'll withdraw my amendment. I think we, we should have a, a sheet with a breakdown of where we stand financially, what we're going to do, what, what are the taxpayers going to save, I didn't give you that. For that, I, I think the points were valid across the committee, and I think, I think I'm willing to withdraw it right now, and we go forward from there. So do I have to have a, a motion to withdraw?
Yeah, yeah, I believe you do.
Yep.
But I think.
Oh, oh, Mr. Aguirre, I'm sorry.
So, Madam Superintendent, have you had any conversations with the mayor about this?
The mayor asked what the potential number of the cost was for transporting students that were not required to be transported.
When was that?
So the law says, we had a conversation yesterday.
Yesterday.
About it. So, one of my questions, there's protocols, there's policies, so I ask for something from you or the prior superintendent or anybody. If I ask you for information, it's expected that that information, when you give it to me, will go to everyone else. That's just a policy procedure. It bothers me a little bit, got to be honest, that the mayor had a conversation with you asking you a question that was very pertinent to something that he was going to bring up today, and I'm sitting here right now, I don't know the answer to that question. So I wrote myself an answer, a question here, because I was going to ask Mr. Pacheco, or you, how much transportation is voluntary, because we've had that question asked in the past. Now it seems like you had that dialogue, so you all know a number, and unless, the mayor told anybody else what that number is, I don't know what it is, but we're at a meeting. I'm curious to know what that number is.
I, I did get the number, yesterday when we kicked it around, it was said around $2 million, but today they ended up telling me the correct number was 2.2 million, so it changed, even since our informal discussion yesterday, when I started thinking about this more realistically going forward, and it's something we could do.
And what does that mean?
That means we are oblig-
That's, that's how much it costs for students in 7th grade.
To 12.
So it's, it's, the, the law says up to 8th grade.
Six, K to 6.
So 7 through 12. We have the SIR buses, we have the GATE students, we have other students that, if they're not in the neighborhood school, that we transport, and that's what that number comes to, more or less. We don't have, because this was just.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, so we don't have exact numbers, and what we said was, we needed to go to the table and look at exactly what that means, but we gave a rough, Kevin went through and gave Mr. Pacheco and gave us around 2 million to 2.2 million.
I'd love to hear what Ms. Pacheco would say.
Absolutely.
Sure. So, based on the contracts, so if I look raw material, I look at the contract and what each bus company bid on, and by those numbers, I can figure out more or less what the question, or, or an answer to this particular question. For instance, a certain company only transport out of district, and also in district special ed transportation. I have another company who does all of in-district transportation door-to-door. So those are all by law. So those are out of the picture, they have to provide those on the city side. So the ones in question would be typical buses, and some McKenney-Vento buses within the district, and then the Durfee transfer fees for the SRTA.
And you're telling me that that comes out to $2 million?
Comes out to a little over 2 million. Raw numbers, again, raw numbers, because I didn't, what I did was I took it by contract. So if I have eight buses going to Cuss and Henry Lord, and each of them are receiving four buses, typical students, the assumption is, by school, there are very few students who are not, over, who are over two miles. So they're all within the two-mile distance from the particular school that they're being serviced in. We're providing that transportation, again, it's outside the law, because the law only covers us to 6th grade, so we don't have to provide transportation beyond the 6th grade. So that, these, these are raw numbers.
Yep.
You know, I'm not going to, this isn't laying out every single bus route, and what it is, is basically by the companies that are transporting tells us who's on those buses.
Yeah, and you also, when you look at it, the, you're paying a front, then they do a second route, a second tier, it's, things, you know, it's not as easy as just look at it like that, it's complicated.
Which is why this is a, a napkin view at the number, I'm going to tell you that the number is, is not going to be way off. It will not be hundreds of thousands of dollars off, because the, the, the transportation itself is, if this was before we did the new contracts, then this would have been a very complicated operation, because we specifically know who's transporting by company in their buses.
How many years, how many years has the school department transported the individuals that we currently transport?
Depending on how old they were, you know, as they age out.
Well, I'm saying forever.
Well, absolutely, no, no, no.
My answer would be forever, like, ever, I've been around here for 20 years.
Yes.
We've done the same thing for 20 years. So now all of a sudden, we're going to say, oh, we'll just figure out, well, we shouldn't be transporting those kids, unless you guys pay us 2.2 out of your ESER funds, which is one-time money, which will therefore create a structural deficit years down the road for the, for the city. And, you know, this transportation issue is not something that we should be doing off a napkin, as you, to quote what you said.
No, I, I agree, I.
I would also like to just ask, when we do get it back, we need to know the statutory responsibility for who pays transportation. The state purposely does not put transportation into the Chapter 70 formula, but the state does have a formula that acknowledges the fact that the cities are responsible for the transportation. So if we're going to talk and we're going to lay it on the table, let's lay it all on the table. For instance, city gets Medicaid reimbursement. Anybody know how much that is per year? At least a million, right? Does everybody on this committee know that the city gets $1 million in Medicaid reimbursement, that we're doing the services, and they don't give us any of that money? So when we look at it, there's, it's very complicated. So when I say I think it's not the right time and place for it, I think it, it's not the right time or place. And I'm not saying that the city is not in a financial turmoil right now, there's very difficulties. I'm willing to try to help, I'm willing to support things. I've gone personally to the legislature myself in the past to try to explain to them that this transportation is not fair the way they do it, it should be incorporated in Chapter 70, we should be able to acknowledge so that it is, I've said over and over in public meetings, that the city council and the mayor are responsible for paying the transportation, but the school committee is in charge of giving the transportation. So if the state, if the city council is going to vote, is going to have to pay the bill, they should be the ones having to say, in essence, because we could keep on saying, we could make this motion, if we said we're going to spend 12 million in transportation, that's putting a bill on them, and they can't do anything about it, because that's their responsibility, so, and they just add 100% of net school spending. So I'm just saying this stuff in this meeting so that other members understand that it's a lot more complicated than just, let's give 2 million. My last question or comment, if you could research, I know that at least maybe two, three years ago, I asked this exact question of how much, what was the transportation that was like voluntary versus automatic? I think that's valid to us to go back and look, because you might be able to glean some of the information. I was concerned when you look at the laws about a mile and a half, you know, we could go to two miles, do we really want a little guy walking two miles to school? Like, is that what we're really about?
Well, I, I think the law says that it's two miles, but that they can walk one mile to get to the bus stop. So that's what the law really says, that they, that that little guy, or girl, would walk a mile to get to the bus stop, and then we'd take them the, the extra mile to the school.
Yeah, so I, I don't want to belabor the point, you, I think you understand what I'm saying, but I also don't want to have the situation come where the superintendent and, and you and Mr. Almeida are negotiating with the mayor, whether it's this mayor or any mayor, without the school committee knowing what's happening, because that's not fair to anybody here, and it shouldn't be fair, it's not fair to the superintendent either, because we used to make some decisions here to say, we're backing up the superintendent the majority of this committee. The end-of-the-year report, which includes the numbers of how much we're going to spend, can no longer be just negotiated between a mayor and a superintendent, because the school committee at that time was very thoughtful and said, no, we're going to have to vote as a majority on what that is, to help the superintendent. So there's a lot of background, backstories, I'm sorry to go on and on, but I think it's important that people know, so with that, I yield, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you for withdrawing this.
Okay, two things. I do agree with Mr. Aguirre that for 20 years, we've never seen this, but for 20 years, we haven't been sitting on this, this kind of level of funding. It's a unique time, it's a time when we can do multiple things, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, but I don't want to beat a dead horse. I do think it's an opportunity to help all three branches, whether it's the schools, the city, or the residents, I think we can do it in one fell swoop, but I do think more information is warranted, so I'm looking for a motion to withdraw my amendment.
Motion to withdraw.